Good evening. This is the organizational and regular business meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District. The meeting is called to order at 5:34. Thank you for joining us. This is our first meeting of the 18-19 school year. Congratulations to Perry and Carl, our new board members. And at this time, I'd like to give them their oath, which I have on the screen, but they don't have the clicker. Excuse me.
You're on the clicker.
This is the first time we've had it on the screen, so...
Oh, yeah. Very fancy.
Well...
We might have it on the screen. Every time we've been...
There it is.
Okay. So if you two would please stand and raise your right hand, and you can read off the screen.
Come on with the timer to get it.
Wait, wait, wait.
You can do it together.
It's switched.
Sorry. Well, you can take over that one.
Be careful there. Be careful.
This is you guys, yes.
This is you.
Ready?
Ready.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the term of July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And now, Greer.
This is an eye test, too.
I thought it was easier than reading out.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution...
He's switched it.
You just switched the president.
Sorry.
...Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Superintendent of Schools of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2018-19 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Don't you hate technology?
Excellent. Okay. At this time, we're going to go into exec session for the purposes of discussing union contract and personnel. Okay.
See ya.
It's official. Yay.
All right. Yes? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Smart move.
I have a motion to go into exec session.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
All those in favor, aye.
Watch your step, my cordial.
That's one stretch. For the pledge of allegiance...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yep. Nice surprise in the paper this morning. We're gonna be disappointed in my grade.
Okay. We're at item 5.0, and at this time, I'm requesting nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education for the 18-19 school year.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Danielson.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Doug Heater.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And are there any other nominations?
Doug.
Okay. In front of you all, you'll find a yellow sheet for the president. If you could please fill in your vote and pass it to me. You don't have to fold it.
I'm gonna fall asleep.
I wish my dog was more like that. Yes.
Okay. Jeff has been appointed, voted the president. Jeff, if you could stand up and read the oath. Do I have to...
Yeah.
We don't have to roll call, because we did it by paper.
Yeah.
We've always read them out loud.
You have to read how people vote, just as protocol.
Do I have to say who voted how?
Yes.
I thought that's why we had to do it on paper. I apologize.
No, we do both, yeah.
Okay. Jeff voted for Jeff. Denise voted for Jeff. Doug voted for Jeff. Carl voted for Doug. Mike voted for Jeff. Perry voted for Doug. And Dan voted for Jeff. So five to two. Now, Jeff, raise your hand.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education of Hyde Park Central School District for the 2018-2019 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Okay. I'm sworn.
Yep. Thinking anything, too?
So we don't confuse them.
You need to watch your step, then.
Yep, yep, yep.
Jeff's still...
Yeah.
Jake, can you pass Doug's phone? Your phone? Jeff always heckles me, sitting next to him, so I'm looking forward to a little recreation there.
So now, Mr. President, I hand the meeting over to you.
At this time, we'll take nominees for Vice President.
I'll nominate Dan Duffy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Sorry. Thank you.
Is there any other nominations? We'll close nominations.
It's the great paper.
Don't have to vote anyway.
Doug voted for Dan. Denise voted for Dan. Jeff voted for Dan. Mike Ock voted for Dan. Perry voted for Dan. Carl voted for Dan. And Dan voted for Dan. It's a unanimous vote. Hang on. Gotta vote him. Ready when you are. Raise your right hand.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Oops. I didn't touch it, I swear.
I didn't memorize it.
Sorry, Dan. I didn't touch it.
...and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2018-2019 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Let me just get your signature.
We're going to the agenda adoption. As you once stated already, the personnel of 15...15-18?
15.18.
15.18 has been modified. Do we have to vote to adopt?
We have to vote to modify first.
Modified. Okay. Can I have a motion to modify the agenda?
Some of...
Second.
First and second.
Wait.
Any discussion?
Who seconded? I'm sorry.
It was Mike and Perry.
It was Mike? I can't get those two voices.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. So...
Now we adopt.
Now we adopt?
Now we have to adopt the agenda.
Oh. Sorry.
It's okay. It's not written.
So, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
Ready? So, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
Ready? So, go to the agenda items for the organizational meeting. Can I have a motion for 7.01?
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? Jake, did this get modified for the vote? Vote? I thought we were gonna pull this.
I did pull it. 701, the appointment of officers.
I have no version.
I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.02? The appointments of the school physician, nurse practitioner, consultant, dentist, internal auditor, external auditor, school attorneys, impartial hearing officers, 3214 hearing officers, bond counsel, and financial advisor. Some of...
Second.
Any discussion?
Question on...number seven, impartial hearing officer. Am I missing? Are there names associated with that? Or what am I...
They're listed on the state education website, and they update them regularly.
Okay.
More discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.03? Designation of appointment staff. Some of... Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.06? Authorizations of the certifier of payroll, purchasing agent...
Did we miss four?
Five.
Four.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. I have a motion for 7.04. Summer appointments/ work.
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.05? Designations, banking, and newspapers.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion?
Question on...number seven, impartial hearing officer. Am I missing? Are there names associated with that? Or what am I...
They're listed on the state education website, and they update them regularly.
Okay. More discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.06? Authorizations of the certifier of payroll, purchasing agent...
Did we miss four?
Five.
Four.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. I have a motion for 7.04. Summer appointments/ work.
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion for 7.05? Designations, banking, and newspapers.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.06? Authorization to certifier of payroll, purchasing agent, petty cash accounts, signing officials, acceptance of official documents, mileage, and reimbursement per diem meal allowance.
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.07? Official undertaking...
Six. Oh, yeah. You're right. Sorry.
Seven. Official undertakings and bonded employees.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion for 7.08? Re-adoption of the district policies in effect.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay. Now you jump in.
Policies.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.09? The adopt resolution regarding indemnification of employees.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. 7.10. Approved the teaching support staff salary schedule for the 2018-2019 school year.
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.09? Election official fee schedule.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion for 7.14? Authorization of transfer of state aid funds by wire.
Some of...
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.06? Authorization to certifier of payroll, purchasing agent, petty cash accounts, signing officials, acceptance of official documents, mileage, and reimbursement per diem meal allowance.
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.08? The adopt resolution regarding indemnification of employees.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.07? Official undertaking...
Six. Oh, yeah. You're right. Sorry.
Seven. Official undertakings and bonded employees.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.08? Authorization to certifier of payroll, purchasing agent, petty cash accounts, signing officials, acceptance of official documents, mileage, and reimbursement per diem meal allowance.
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question, was any of these have to be modified due to the new minimum wage?
Yes. They were modified so that we'll be in compliance with the new minimum wage that comes into effect in January 2019.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion for 7.11? Approved piano accompanist and the rate of services.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.12? Appoint board of registration to serve at district elections.
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just thank you to the people that serve in this capacity.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.13? Election official fee schedule.
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just thank you to the people that serve in this capacity. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.13? Election official fee schedule.
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.14? Authorization of transfer of state aid funds by wire.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, can I have a motion for 7.15? Approved charter for audit committee.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion?
Has this charter been changed, or is it just that every year we approve it?
There was one minor change to it. Do you want us to...
Oh, is that the one where we increased it to five, the bottom number?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Fast. Can I have a motion for 7.16? Appoint community member to the audit committee.
The move.
Second.
Any discussion?
What? I thought I read that we were supposed to have two...two non...or two members?
We can have up to...
Up to...
Up to...
Up to. Okay. All right.
We don't...there's only the first two years that we actually had two.
Okay. I remember I read something like that. Okay. And the other comment would be thank you to Kevin for his service.
Yes to that one. Is there any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion for 7.17? Borrowing resolution. This will be a roll call vote, right?
Yes.
So, can I have a motion first?
The move.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, Denise?
Yes.
I vote yes. Dan?
Aye.
Mr. Heater, Doug?
Aye.
Perry?
Yes.
Carl?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I have a motion for 7.18? Participation in the National School Lunch Program, adopt fees, reduce prices, meal policy, and eligibility guide for the 2018-2019 school year.
Some of...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are these prices the same as last year, or have there been increases?
They're the same. They've been the same for several years. Lauren runs the expense information through a template provided by New York State, and they recommend if we should make changes or not. We haven't had a recommended change in several years.
Great. Thank you. So, are those in favor? Opposed? Fast. Okay. Are those in favor? Opposed? Fast. Okay. Are those in favor? Opposed? Fast. Okay. Are those in favor? Opposed? Fast. So, 8.03. Designation of the school board members serving the Duchess County School Boards Association.
I am prepared to continue on that unless someone feels strongly that they would like to.
Okay. 8.04. The energy advisory committee.
Who's on there right now, Jeff?
It'd have been Steve and myself. I will continue on that if...
I'll do that.
Carl?
Sure.
Okay.
And I'd like to go this year, but you know.
Don't use the cost of all those units.
For the government committee? I will join that one.
I was on that, but I have to admit, I don't know that...
We didn't meet.
We never met. I mean, it was more of a liaison position, as I would say.
Right.
If I may...oh, sorry, Dan.
I was gonna say, we met a couple of years ago. We did have a meeting.
Generally, what we find with that one, if I may? Everybody okay with me chiming in on this one?
Jump in.
Generally, with that one, if there's anything where, you know, we need to be president at town hall, or legislators want to meet with the district for a specific reason, not just to come have coffee, whoever is the designee, we call an invite. So, it's in...we basically...it's not something that has a standing meeting, but once in a while, if there's a little thing that we need to straighten out with another governmental entity, we like to bring a board member. Generally, a lot of it defaults to the president, but other...but there are cases where we...the designated person, we do try to get...come to that meeting.
I'd be willing to do that if nobody else...
...experience out of town.
Yeah. I was thinking...
Or that would you get...
Okay. For negotiations committee?
We have three. So, who...
I'm Jeff. Okay. Negotiations committee?
I'll stay on.
And I'll stay on.
So, I stepped in with Steve leaving, and I'm willing to continue that, but if someone else would like to, I'm open to that as well.
Okay, Perry. The personnel committee?
I'd like to stay on that.
I'll stay on that one.
I'll stay on that. Unless somebody else...you want to go?
No.
Okay. Policy committee?
Yeah, I'll stay on that.
I'd like to stand that, too. Any interest?
Maybe an interest, but not time. Okay. The save committee?
I will stay on that one. I mean, I have...I think that I have actually thought I was on that. I mean, I have an interest in that. I have to admit, sometimes it's difficult. I see the meeting times, and it's...because they're generally in the middle of the day, which makes it a little difficult.
Nearly 9:30 in the morning.
Yeah. But, I mean, you know, if we want a second name, I'll put it on there, and I'll try to get to as many as I can.
Okay.
I'll back him up and be a surge, so hopefully we get two out of three.
The special aid committee? I will stay on there.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Okay. That's it for committees.
So, we'll just continue with regular business meetings.
And now we're like switching out of organizational meeting and going to a regular meeting.
We're all organized.
That's the way it's always been done.[880.41]
Can I have a motion for 717, borrowing resolution? This will be a roll call vote, right? So can I have a motion first?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So Denise?
Yes.
I vote yes. Dan?
Aye.
Mr. Heter, Doug?
Aye.
Perry?
Yes.
Carl?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have a motion for 718, participation in the National School Lunch Program, adopt fees, reduce prices, meal policy, and eligibility guide for the 2018-2019 school year. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed? So I have a motion for 719, approve the meal prices. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are these prices the same as last year, or have there been increases?
They're the same. They've been the same for several years. Lauren runs the expense information through a template provided by New York State, and they recommend if we should make changes or not. They haven't had a recommended change in several years.
Great. Thank you. So are those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we're on to committees and designation. For those who would want to serve on the other committee. Mike?
I'll stay on.
I'll stay on. Unless anybody else is interested.
Doug, Mike, Denise, that was?
Who wants to be on the DLT? I'm going to try to go back on.
Yeah, I could. I was on because of capital, but I'm open to that. If there's somebody else. Doug, did you want to continue on DLT?
I actually dropped off it last year because I had so many other things that was on. I'll have less, though. I'll go back on it.
Just a reminder, you don't need three for every, so don't feel obligated to have three.
Right. And we can't have more than three, though.
You can't have more than three.
Yep.
But you can have one, you can have two.
Yep.
So 8.03, designation of the school board members serving the Duchess County School Boards Association.
I am prepared to continue on that unless someone feels strongly that they would like
Okay. 8.04, the Energy Advisory Committee.
Who's on there right now, Joe?
It'd have been Steve and myself. I will continue on that if...
I'll do that.
Carl?
Sure.
And I'd like to go this year, but then, you know.
For the government committee? Let's say I will join that one.
I was on that, but I have to admit, I don't know that...
We didn't met.
We never met. I mean, it was more of a liaison position, as I would say.
If I may, oh, sorry, Dan.
I was going to say, we met a couple of years ago. We did have a meeting.
Generally, what we find with that one, if I may, everybody okay with me chiming in on this one?
Jump in, jump in.
Generally, with that one, if there's anything where, you know, we need to be president at town hall, or legislators want to meet with the district for a specific reason, not just to come have coffee, whoever is the designee, we call an invite. So it's in, we basically, it's not something that has a standing meeting, but once in a while, if there's a little thing that we need to straighten out with another governmental entity, we like to bring a board member. Generally, a lot of it defaults to the president, but other, but there are cases where we, the designated person, we do try to get, come to that meeting. I'd be willing to do that if nobody else...
Yeah, I was thinking.
Okay, for negotiations committee?
We have three, so who?
And Jeff. Okay, negotiations committee?
I'll stay on.
And I'll stay on.
So I stepped in with Steve leaving, and I'm willing to continue that, but if someone else would like to, I'm open to that as well.
Okay, Perry? The personnel committee?
I'd like to stay on that.
I'll stay on that one. I'll stay on that. Unless somebody else, you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Okay, policy committee?
Yeah, I'll stay on that.
I'd like to stand that, too. Any interest? No.
Maybe an interest, but not time.
Okay, the save committee? I will stay on that one.
I mean, I have, I think that I have actually thought I was on that. I mean, I have an interest in that. I have to admit, sometimes it's difficult. I see the meeting times, and it's, because they're generally in the middle of the day, which makes it a little difficult.
Nearly 9:30 in the morning.
But, I mean, you know, if we want a second name, I'll put it on there, and I'll try to get to as many as I can.
Okay.
I'll back them up and be a surge, so hopefully we get two out of three.
The special ed committee?
I'd like to stay on.
Yep.
Anyone else?
That's it for committees. So we'll just continue with regular business meetings.
Now we're like switching out of organizational meeting and going to a regular meeting.
We're all organized.
That's the way it's always been done.
I feel different already.
Me, too.
So upcoming meetings and events, the next board meeting will be in August 23rd, 6:00 PM here at the district office. This time, we have pride. Does anyone have anything to share?
Well, Deanna's been waiting, so we'll do Deanna first, and then I'll just touch base on Summer. But we are here with a very special, non-human new staff member, so Deanna, you want to come up and introduce? With the last time you saw a facility dog here, it was not ours. It was the...
You're talking about me?
But this is officially Milano, so I'll let Deanna take it away.
That's a service call.
Does his badge, does his badge work at the door?
It does, and we joked that we should get a doggy door, that it could open, so he could get in and out.
Write a work order for him.
And the other dogs without the badge won't be able to get in.
That's right.
So this is Milano. He's two years old. He is half golden retriever and half Labrador. And we trained the last week of June. We were lucky. We thought we were going to go to Torrington, Connecticut, the third week in July, and we were able to combine our trainings so that we didn't have the travel expenses of going to Connecticut, and we actually trained with the Children's Home of Poughkeepsie. The Children's Home of Poughkeepsie received their third dog, Elvis, a black lab. And Milano trained with us, and we had the other dogs from the Children's Home that did all of the exercises with us. We successfully all completed that program. It was a lot to learn. Lou joked with us that the dogs are perfect and perfectly trained, but you know nothing, our trainer. So it was a lot of teaching us what to do and how to do it, and how to best introduce the dogs to kids, and use their commands appropriately, and so we all completed that. Officer Monica went with us, with our team from Violet Avenue today. He came and picked Milano up for a date, so he got to go over to the police station and meet the chief of High Park, and he went to town hall, and over to the high school just to visit a little bit in case he should ever need to go over there. And he has had two successful days at Summer Bridge. The kids already love him. When Officer Monica had him on the field trip, I went into the cafeteria at lunchtime to check on the kids before buses, and they were like, "Where's Milano? Like, you're nice to see, but we want Milano." So they're already really, really enjoying having him in the building and having him there. So that's Milano. And he was on the cover of the Poughkeepsie Journal today, if you saw it. He made the front cover. There was also, I hope you also got to see the ABC News snippet that they did on the training and what it's for and what a facility dog is.
No, it was monumental. It was big, it was big. It was a whole section on that.
On the Poughkeepsie Journal?
ABC News.
I know.
You're famous.
We had a whole little interview. It was, it was really great. So it was nice that we were able to shed some positive light on the project, and we're really excited to roll it out during the year. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from parents who've been in the building and the kids already, and just feedback from random people online that are responding to the articles that have been posted, so it's been really nice.
Deanna, who are the other handlers that were trained in the building?
Suzanne Gill is a fourth grade teacher at Violet Avenue. Elna Sanford is our school nurse. Donna Lown is the reading teacher at Violet Avenue. So it's the four of us from within the building, and then Officer Monaco also went with us. Yeah.
Are there guidelines about how long he has to work, or does he get like time off during the day? I mean, he looks very tired today, right? Was it a busy day?
It's been a busy day. You know, he wakes up around between 5:00 and 5:15 in the morning. If I don't wake up, he grabs my shirt and wakes me up. And then he went to school today. So he started the day at Summer Bridge. We got there about 7:30. He worked all day at Summer Bridge. After Summer Bridge, when the kids dismissed, he takes a nap. He walks a couple of times during the day, and then I took him home for dinner. We had a meeting here at district office this afternoon at 2:00. He stayed for the meeting, and then he went home, dinner, and he had some exercise, some time to rest, and then we came back. Yeah. He had a busy day today.
Works for me.
But he's pretty good and calm most of the time. If I were to take the vest off and start throwing a ball around, he would be his regular playful self. But with his cape on, he's pretty calm like this, even with the kids. Yeah.
We, he was, Aviva and I were with Deanna on the first day of Summer Bridge yesterday, and so over, what about 100 kids?
Yeah, it was about 110 yesterday and some more today.
And he, he was there in the front hallway as all the children came in, and he was watchful, but calm, and so any child that wanted to approach and pet him, it was a very, it was almost as if he knew how to be humble and inviting, so children could choose to pet him or just walk by.
Yep.
But to have 100 brand-new children parade in front of a two-year-old dog, and the dog be as calm and receptive and welcoming, it was amazing to watch.
And that's...
The first time I wasn't looking at the kids, I was watching the dog.
And that's the training, right? So since he was born, so for two years, he's been trained to be just like this. Exactly. And I had a nice thing happen yesterday. After the puppies are born, when they leave the nursery, they go to foster homes, and these are people who take the dogs on a voluntary basis and start to teach them basic commands and housebreak them. And the woman who had him when he was a puppy and did that work as a volunteer, reached out to the reporter from the Poughkeepsie Journal and asked the reporter to get her in touch with me, and she shared some of his baby photographs. As cute as he is now, the baby photographs are great. And she also sent a video of some of his first commands and him learning his first commands. So it's been really, really nice, and she, I invited her to come to Violet Avenue so that she could see the work that he's doing now. You know, she said he touched her heart so much that she still has his baby collar hanging on her rearview mirror because he was such a special dog, and she was so excited that this is the work he was chosen for because she just thought he would be perfect with kids. So, you know, it's definitely an amazing gift, and we're so excited about what's going to happen throughout the school year and how he's going to be able to support the kids when they come back. Any other questions?
We've got to work on the other schools now.
I know, and the kids are asking in Summer Bridge. They're like, "We want a Milano, too. Can we have a Milano?" So they're, they're very excited. So I warned the principals at our meeting today at 2:00 o'clock. We walked in, I was like, "Guys, you're in for it in September," because they're all asking and they all love him. Yeah, so I'll just share now, you know, for a new board member, but also for, you know, other people, that, you know, what the process was, is that, you know, you really came with this idea, and part of the proposal was that you own the dog, the liability, the cost, all of that. The handler stepped up and shared that responsibility and volunteer. So what the district is purchasing is the contract for him to work for us and the training. You know, so certainly if there was another group in another building who had that interest, I could propose it the way that we did, you know, for this, so that when people ask, it isn't a board decision or my decision about it. People have to really put a lot out personally to make that happen, so... It is a commitment, but it's definitely been a worthwhile commitment, so. All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you for having us.
Good night, Milano.
He does look sleepy.
Maybe this plan works with what branch you're in.
Really? Oh, my God.
Would that be something?
That would be something.
Is there any more pride?
Yeah, I'll just say another word about, so we're in false wing. We have probably close to 500 kids coming through our doors this summer. Our STEM camp, Camp Invention, will be later on in the summer, but as of right now, we have Violet Avenue running our Summer Bridge extended school year for the students who qualify for extended school year or out at the Salt Point Center. The Havlin Middle School has its summer program open for the second year in a row, and they basically doubled enrollment. And we house the regional summer school high school at FDR High School. We have the largest number of students. We do save money because it is a COSER run through BOSI's, and we have about four other districts that will participate either by sending their kids there all summer or for the region's prep portion. If you're wandering through Duchess BOSI's, either through our summer school or over there, you may see a familiar face, Chris Fiorentino, who was an assistant principal in the high school and then the middle school. He was just hired in the instructional services department, working directly with Cora, so he was at the high school today. Guess he's getting some central office instructional experience. So we are up and running. We have buses running. We have children coming in every day, so we are more than happy to see young faces again. We were thrilled to be there on opening day at Summer Bridge, both Aviva and I. Today, we had our annual district office workshop. This year, we did it over at Val Kil. We do a training and a lunch. It's the one time of the year that all of our facilities and all of our business office personnel, instruction, district clerk, the, what we call the 12-monthers, minus the principals and their secretaries, get together for a workshop. And it was our first time going to Val Kil, and there's a little bit of parking, it's tight parking, so we provided a school bus, and at least 40 of us got on the school bus and went over to Val Kil. Everybody loved the venue. It was smaller than Teconic, less expensive than Teconic, the regional, the old Statsburg school, and, you know, we just really value the time. Rebecca gave a presentation today, too, on a new program, but we value the time to once a year pause and take the 12-month employees off campus for a workshop that really accommodates everybody from the painter to the superintendent to the electrician to the deputy, and it's a good once-a-year meeting, and I really appreciated the people who were willing to ride the bus. Those who didn't ride the bus, carpoolled. So that was great.
Can I just make one comment on the summer programs? The rooms are now air-conditioned. People, it's, it's not like they're suffering, and as in past years. So I think the facilities did a great job putting in window, temporary window, air conditioners. The rooms are cool, and kids were much happier.
Absolutely.
And I also want to thank facilities for the flexibility. They have to get all of the buildings ready, and every classroom, they always work around our summer programs.
I just wanted to say something, too. I'm just going to throwback a little bit. I just wanted to also thank facilities, but just comment on how wonderful graduation was, right? You know, I mean, I'm ever in awe of our students, and they were wonderful, right? You know, the speeches they gave were fabulous, and everybody was so excited, and, you know, the weather cooperated just beautifully, but it was wonderful. I love graduation, it's my favorite.
The guest speaker did a very good job.
Yes, everybody was great. It was wonderful.
Not a single beach ball.
First time ever.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh. No air horns. Do we hear an air horn? No air horns, which was nice. I know, it was a lovely ceremony. Everybody was lovely. That's why, it was just wonderful.
What I liked the most was they wouldn't let Mr. Party in without their chant. Definitely a lot of pride in, in our school. So was the superintendent's report?
That was, I mixed it with pride and was going to comment on graduation as well, so we're good.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I think it's good for the public to hear the board members more important than hearing me. No, truly.
At this time, we'll open it for public participation, so can I have a motion to open public participation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Does anybody would like to address the board?
You're off to a bit snarky.
Yeah. So can I close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Is there anything we have to do for board discussion? Nothing?
I think so.
So can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we have a motion for 16.01, special education placements.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I've reviewed the packet a little more cursory than in other days because we had over 50 pages of information to review, and I was gone all this weekend, but I recommend its adoption as presented.
All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion for 16.02, interminable agreement with the Roosevelt Fire District on fuel?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we have to expand the diesel facility?
The plan is for them just to buy gasoline, but the attorney thought we should include diesel in case we wanted to get into that agreement at some point. They're buying fuel for the SUVs, I think the chief's truck, and they have another truck they use when they do trainings.
Second.
All those in favor? Can I have a motion for 1603, payment in lieu of taxes for the solar energy systems with the Underhill Solar LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Lynda, you want to explain this one? I think this may be the first recent vote we've had on it, just so people are aware of what's going on.
Sure. So Underhill Solar is a company that is building a solar facility on Underhill Road, and under New York State law, they are tax exempt, but the law also states that they have to offer a pilot to certain municipalities, including school districts. So they offered to enter into a pilot agreement with us. We had to accept because it was either that or they would be tax exempt. We have been negotiating with them through our attorneys. Most recently, they had increased what they offered to us, but the board asked if we could go back and see if there was anything else we could, or that they could offer us as well. So in addition to the most recent pilot agreement that they offered, they also offered to make a one-time $15,000 donation to the school district, and they stated that they would do the same thing for another pilot that they have, or another facility that they have on Salt Point Road, which they'll be making an offer for a pilot at a later date.
Is there any reason why the dollar value of the pilot payment is not identified in this?
It should, well, we don't have the, the attorney is changing the agreement to include the donation. I guess it didn't come through on here under administrative content. There was an image to enter to show the, to show the pilot. But over the course of 15 years, the total payments would be $158,778. It starts at, the first year is $9,181, and then it increases. There's a 2% escalator every year.
Yeah, yeah, just going to say, it references in addition to the pilot payment, but there's no, nothing there showing...
Right, we don't have the agreement yet. So this resolution is authorizing the board president to enter into the agreement when it's ready. We had added this because we're not meeting again, the board's not meeting again until the end of August.
On my screen, it shows.
Oh, on mine, it doesn't. I'm sorry.
You're special.
I had no idea it didn't show on your screen, that's all. I don't know why.
So you're going to be able to send that to the rest of the board?
Yeah, I can email it to everyone. Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor? So 16.04, deputy superintendent terms and conditions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there's, I think, a typo, and I'm trying to pull it up. On a 3E triple I, I think that there's, I've got to pull it back up. I think it was supposed to be 10, but I think it's just got, it just says the number 1, if I remember correct.
Oh, you're right. I see it now.
Okay. Yep.
10.
I do read this stuff, Jay.
I read it, but I didn't catch it.
Triple I. Should be 10. Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion to modify that, then?
I don't think so. I think it's purely a typo that's just being corrected.
The written word, I think, supersedes that anyway.
All those in favor? Can I have a motion for 1605, school business administrator terms and conditions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in...
I would just like to say that this signifies a switch in, Lynda, moving from a civil service position to a certified administrator position. She does have her interim certificate, so congratulations on receiving that certificate. Really moving to a new level.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Okay, I have a motion to enter public participation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody else like to address the board? So can I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? This time, there's no other matters deemed by the board to talk. We have no need to create a clerk pro tempore. So I have a motion to end.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.